I don't really like the gavel, honestly. It's pretty, it's harsh. Good morning, welcome to the Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting. I'm Ryan Dorsey, Chair of the Committee, Representative of the 3rd District. Today, the committee will hear Legislative Oversight 250004 Baltimore City Transportation Operations and Oversight today. The topic of discussion is Community Engagement. In attendance, we have to my right, Councilman Mark Parker from the 1st District, Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th District, Tony Leva, Staff to the Committee. To my immediate right, Vice Chair of the Committee and Vice President of the City Council, Sharon Green Middleton from the 6th District. To her left, Paris Gray from the 8th District. To his left, Zach Blanchard from the 11th District. We are also joined by, I saw Ethan Cohen in here from the City Council President's Office, Ethan Hassick, sorry. Ethan Cohen was a different person. And Tyler Schnella from the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. Pleased to see City Administrator Faith Leach in the House, hello. And our Transportation Director Veronica Macbeth from the Department of Transportation and her staff who she will introduce in the course of a presentation that the department will give to kick things off here today. Good morning, Madam Director.
Good morning.
Just very quickly, we're here on the topic of Community Engagement, the second in a routinely scheduled series of Oversight Hearings on different areas of operations within the Department of Transportation. In the last hearing where we discussed the matter of parking enforcement, we kind of led off with the committee kind of having a number of topics that we wanted to discuss, that we had made the department aware of in advance. And they prepared some information, but we had kind of the committee leading off and with kind of questions to kind of walk us through these various topics, rather than have the department lead us with a PowerPoint presentation. I think that the topic of Community Engagement is a little bit different than parking enforcement, which is such a kind of a multifaceted operational thing. There's kind of a lot of moving parts to understand, a lot of different things about staffing and deployment and hours spent doing what and where. Community Engagement is a little bit different and I think there's kind of some philosophical questions about this and purposes and other things. And so I asked the department, instead of us kind of leading with our topics, we're having some weird computer stuff happening up here, I asked the department to lead us off with a presentation today. If that's cool with our committee members here, we'll get started. Madam Director, it's all you. Would you start by introducing the folks you got with you?
Absolutely, good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us again. This is always so fun seeing you all. I'm going to start with introducing my colleagues from the Office of Transportation. I'll start in the front. I have Sean Burnett, I have Stu Sorota at the far end, I have Christian, why is your last name escaping? McNeil, I was going to say McDaniel, sorry. Christian McNeil, Asia Scott, Luciano Diaz, Eric James. We have our new community aide, India, back here. And I have Viobia Akilo. And Alan does not work for me, I work for him. And I have my other boss, CA Leach, to the left of me. So, that is everyone. We're good, okay. So, we're going to get started. As the Chair mentioned, we're here to talk about Community Engagement and discussing our strategic plan for Community Engagement. So, just to give you a little bit of background, our strategic plan is rooted in equity, accessibility, and community empowerment. And this plan implements Mayor Brandon Scott's goal to increase transparency and meaningful resident participation in government, as it's outlined in his Building a Better Baltimore in his First Term Action Plan. And it builds upon the city's Complete Streets Manual, which commits to an equitable approach to public engagement and education. So, by providing a predictable, consistent process for public engagement in projects, this strategic approach enables BCDOT to facilitate meaningful, equitable resident participation in its work plan, ultimately delivering transportation solutions that create a more connected, sustainable, and vibrant Baltimore that truly reflects community needs and desires. So here you'll see our agenda, which we'll be talking about. Our Guiding Principles outline the core values and priorities that drive the projects that we work on. The Purpose explains how the projects align with broader community or organizational objectives. Our Complete Streets Guidelines discuss the concepts of complete streets, designing roads for all users, including pedestrians, cyclists, motorists, and public transportation. The Life Cycle of Community Engagement, and essentially this presents the phases of Community Engagement, from planning to implementation. Also explaining methods of outreach, including public meetings, surveys, and workshops. And additionally highlighting the importance of feedback loops and transparent communication. And also noting emergency exceptions, so explaining scenarios where emergency exceptions might apply. Also denoting metrics, where we share how we are taking the data-driven approach by adding key performance indicators to measure our success. And lastly, any next steps, where we outline the ongoing actions within our agency. So Guiding Principles. Our Guiding Principles include the following. We'll talk about equity and inclusion. And this includes prioritizing engagement with historically underrepresented communities and ensuring all residents have meaningful opportunities to participate regardless of race, income, language, health, ability, or geographic location.
Just for a second. It's feeling a little chaotic up here. I just want you to be aware, like, all of our computer monitors are just blinking on and off, going black and on and on again. Tony's trying to kind of figure this out.
Okay, I can wait.
It's a little, I just want to note this because it's a little distracting up here on our end. I don't want it to seem like we're not giving you the attention that this deserves.
I'm happy to pause.
I also do want to note, we didn't get the presentation in advance. Is there a PDF copy that could be sent to us?
Yes, there is.
You're having a printed, help us to have that in front of us to be able to keep awareness of this for reference without having to go back and forth in the slides as we discuss after the presentation. No, it's, I think it's, it's like the HDMI switch or something like that. It's in the, just in the distribution and the link to the computer monitors. It's probably unplug it and plug it back in. Yeah, pull out the Nintendo. Sega, if that's more your bag.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. We'll see. We're going to take a recess for five minutes and try to sort this out and be right back. All right, let's get back to it here. Oh, did it stop working again? It was working and now it's not, but so IT is coming over. We're going to have to rely on the big screen here. All right, folks. Director, you may proceed.
Okay, would you like me to go back at any point?
If you could kind of just start from the beginning of this slide again, that would be helpful because the previous one was kind of an agenda overview. I assume that you have a slide for each of those items that was listed in the initial one. So, let's, let's go with this. And then we are expecting, Tyler has stepped out of the room, so I assume that he is going to get us the printed copies of this.
Yes, he said he had them, so I think he was running to grab them.
Okay, great. Proceed.
Okay, so talking a bit about our Guiding Principles. So, our Guiding Principles start with equity and inclusion, where we are prioritizing engagement with historically underrepresented communities and ensuring that all residents have meaningful opportunities to participate regardless of race, income, language, health, ability, or geographic location. Next is transparency, where we're providing clear, accurate, and timely information about transportation projects, our decision-making processes, constraints, and how public input will be used. And then additionally, accessibility. Making sure we are eliminating barriers to participation by offering multiple engagement formats, accommodations for people with disabilities, multilingual materials, and options for participation outside of our traditional business hours. Accountability, which we're demonstrating how community input influences decisions and regularly reporting back to our stakeholders on project progress and outcomes. Collaboration, where we're fostering partnerships with community organizations, neighborhood associations, advocacy groups, and other city agencies to leverage existing networks and to build trust. As well as early and continuous involvement, where we're engaging communities from the earliest stages of the projects, conceptualization through implementation and evaluation. Here we're going to break down some of our Community Engagement regulatory requirements, noting some of our federal requirements, including the Title VI, Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, American with Disabilities Act, better known as ADA, and then the National Environmental Policy Act, which is NEPA, which may or may not exist anymore. I don't know if I was supposed to say that. It's facts. Prohibits discrimination based on color, race, or national origin. And several related statutes will fall under this program, including the prohibition on discrimination based on age, sex, and disability. And the Americans with Disability Act, also known as ADA, it requires reasonable accommodations and accessible formats for all engagement activities. And the environmental justice component, which is Executive Order 12898, this addresses disproportionate impacts on low-income communities and communities of color. And then additionally, NEPA requires public involvement for all federally funded projects undergoing environmental review processes. And as far as state and local requirements, inclusions, Maryland Open Meetings Act includes ensuring transparency and public access for decision-making. And the Baltimore City Charter and Code requirements specifies requirements for public notice and hearings. And Baltimore Sustainability Plan includes alignment with citywide community engagement goals. And the BCDOT Equity Framework implements department-specific equity goals in all of our engagement activities. So, when should we do Community Engagement? We strive to do Community Engagement during the following times. Roadway improvements, which such as resurfacing, repairing, and upgrading streets to improve safety and traffic flow. Also during traffic and safety enhancements, which includes installing traffic signals, crosswalks, signage, and speed calming measures to promote safer streets. Bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, wherein we're adding bike lanes, sidewalks, multi-use trails, and pedestrian-friendly features. During transit projects, wherein we're collaborating with MTA to improve public transportation infrastructure, such as bus lanes, transit stops, and accessibility components. For bridges and infrastructure maintenance, where we're repairing and maintaining bridges, tunnels, and other critical infrastructure. Streetscape and beautification, wherein we're enhancing public spaces with landscaping, lighting, and public art to create vibrant and welcoming environments. Special initiatives, where we have projects that support broader city goals, such as Vision Zero, where we're aiming to eliminate traffic fatalities, or the introduction of a new public-facing process or system. And then finally, emergency and resiliency projects. Addressing urgent needs and preparing infrastructure to withstand extreme weather and emergencies. Complete Streets. So, our goal is to have complete streets intertwined in every DOT transportation project. With equity at its core, BCDOT is committed to making sure that transportation projects benefit all of Baltimore residents equitably. And so, we're here focused on avoiding any disproportionate impacts on specific populations. Our Community Engagement Division plays a crucial role in promoting complete streets principles. We design streets that are safe, accessible, and comfortable for everyone, whether you're walking, biking, driving, or using public transit. We don't just talk about equity, we measure it. Our assessments look closely at how projects affect different groups, considering race, gender, age, disability, ethnicity, and income to ensure fair treatment for all. By involving diverse voices and conducting through equity assessments, we create streets that support everyone's needs, from kids walking to school to seniors accessing community resources. And we strive to keep the community informed and involved through every step of the way. Building trust through our open dialogue and transparent decision-making. So this next slide, you're going to see the Transportation Project Cycle. Here we're striving for our Transportation Project Cycle to have the following steps. One, creating an engagement plan, wherein we review prior community concerns and ensure awareness of the projects and its goals. Two, DOT develops project concepts and shares with community stakeholders for feedback. Three, DOT uses community feedback to select a preferred concept and design alternative. Four, DOT advances the preferred alternative to final design and creates engineering plans. Five, DOT constructs the project, providing improved mobility and safety benefits for all. What's worth noting is that during all these stages, the goal of our Community Engagement is to make sure that we are interacting with our community members and our business stakeholders throughout the entire time. Here you'll see the Community Engagement Process. And you don't have your handouts, so you cannot see how small that is. I don't know if... Oh, they're working? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I did not know that. Okay, okay. I don't necessarily have any notes on this, but I will just say that we took the... Excuse me, hold on. We took just the directions that we had and specifically applied the notes to allow you to see the actual steps to move forward and the actual engagement process. So, next is Project Concept Development. So, our Project Concept Development and Community Engagement Key Activities. Community Discovery. Here we would conduct a walk audit or tour with community members facilitated by DOT stakeholders. Next, we would Design Development, and here Creating Concepts and Design Alternatives for the Project. Next, Stakeholder Briefings would include briefing elected officials on concepts and design alternatives, briefing key city agencies and relevant state agencies if applicable. Public Engagement Strategies and Targeted Outreach. Sending mailers within a quarter mile of the project area, one-plus month before the meeting. And then Digital Engagement, which is creating interactive maps and survey of concepts on Streets of Baltimore page. As far as community meetings go, we would host hybrid design-alternative meetings to share options and gather feedback from community and stakeholders. Present conceptual designs and alternatives for community feedback. Hosting interactive design workshops and alternatives for community feedback. And hosting interactive design workshops to gather specific input on project elements. As it relates to in-person connections, we would conduct pop-ups at community events and/or dedicated open houses. And then Visualization and documentation, we would use visualization tools to help stakeholders understand proposed changes. Establishing ongoing communication channels for updates and questions. Documenting how community input is incorporated into the design refinements. And noting that surveys will remain open for at least one month after the design-alternative meeting to allow for additional feedback, including those people who were at the meeting or perhaps for folks who have missed meetings. Here you'll see our diagram for Emergency Work Exceptions. As we know, we love when things are prepared and planned for, but we all have emergencies. And so it's crucial that as much as we can, we are prepared for some of the things that come along with emergencies. So, it's crucial to ensure that the communication channels are open and efficient to quickly assess the situations for urgency. And once an emergency is notified, the next step is to confirm whether it qualifies as an emergency by evaluating its scope, its impact, and potential risks. So considering safety, environmental, and other operational factors. After confirming the emergency, the administration must be notified to ensure they know the situation and can provide any necessary support. A public notice should inform the community about the emergency, its impact, and any action the public needs to take, such as detours or road closures. The notice should be disseminated through all available communication channels, including social media, press releases, and websites. Simultaneously, local government, city council members must be notified to keep them informed about the emergency, enabling them to address community concerns or make decisions quickly. And once the notification process is in place, coordination with various divisions is essential to ensure a unified response to the emergency. And each division must be assigned specific roles and responsibilities, ensuring alignment in addressing the situation. Additionally, coordination with local businesses and stakeholders is very crucial. Owners should be informed about potential disruptions and work together to minimize operational issues. And finally, teams should be placed on standby for canvassing. These teams should be ready to conduct on-the-ground outreach, providing direct communication and guidance to those in affected areas. And following these steps to manage the emergency effectively can execute a comprehensive and coordinated response plan. So here we've cited a pilot project. This is actually an ongoing project that is currently happening right now. It's a project that's happening citywide, so we were able to cite and utilize it as a project that we could, I guess, provide as an example that how we would execute a citywide community engagement plan. So, the project is listed as TR 24301, which is Orleans Street Rehabilitation from North Wolf Street to North Elwood Street. And it's a project involving roadway reconstruction, new streetscape elements, safety analysis, and signal lighting and ADA upgrades along the Orleans Street Corridor. Using this project as a pilot initiative, DOT will ensure community members are well-informed and actively involved in the project's development. BCDOT will collaborate with local stakeholders to ensure the project aligns with the community needs and the values. So, you've seen this slide before. The difference is this slide now contains some specific steps that overlap with the specific engagement efforts that will be utilized with our pilot project, the Orleans Street rehabilitation from North Wolf to Elwood. So, throughout the project lifecycle, DOT will collaborate with the stakeholders and incorporate the community feedback into the project design. And the project is currently in the planning phase, so developing stakeholder lists is ongoing and fleshing out the engagement strategy and timeline is also still ongoing. The engagement will kick off with two main initiatives. First, the Dedicated Streets of Baltimore webpage, where the community can go to learn about the project and find the latest updates. Second, BCDOT will host a listening session along with the project limits to kick off the data collection and learn about the community's priorities for this area. And additionally, community meetings will be held at critical junctures thereafter, such as a presentation of the different cross-sections of alternatives, presentation of the selected alternatives developed to the 30% design or preliminary design phase. Again, it's 65% and 95% design phases. And then finally, feedback from these meetings will be incorporated at each phase of the design. And then once construction is imminent, the community will continue to be kept informed of key milestones, such as construction kickoff, key traffic impacts, and the anticipated construction completion. Here, traditional public meeting types. I guess in an effort for time, I know we're running a little behind, I'm just going to highlight them. So, public meetings and hearings, and this is giving communities a chance to speak with staff and project managers. Press conferences are the opportunity to provide information at a wider scale. Focus groups and workshops allow us to talk face-to-face with stakeholders and to dig into some deeper issues. Prime example would be focus groups and workshops that we have used for West Baltimore United. Also, there's advisory committees. Some of them include Complete Streets Advisory Committee, Mayor's Bicycle Advisory Committee, and also the Micro Mobility Committee. Pop-up events that we've participated in, like at festivals, churches, events, and farmers' markets, and then also quarterly planning meetings. And lastly, we do have a lot of check-in meetings where we go to community meetings just to check in and track projects and the engagement. And not full-blown meetings, but it's just essentially to check on progress. Next up, and we are towards the end, so I apologize for how long this might be taking. These are the metrics, so taking a look at quantitative and qualitative metrics. With quantitative metrics, we will be tracking the number and demographic diversity of participants at public meetings to ensure that all voices are heard. Planning to measure the number of comments via email and how many issues were resolved, showing our commitment to addressing the issues resolved. Showing our commitment to addressing the concerns of the community with our Community Engagement Dashboards. And analyzing service statistics to improve how we can address community needs. Additionally, understanding the real-world impacts of the projects that we're doing and making sure we're measuring changes to projects based on the community input to demonstrate that engagement isn't just for show, but that it is relevant to real-life impacts and real-life decisions. And then as far as qualitative metrics, listening to feedback on the engagement process itself and aiming for high participant satisfaction and creating a strong sense of trust and transparency. Not just, we value not just the quantity, but the quality of the feedback. And then a key goal is to strengthen our relationships and build new ones through the efforts of engagement. And so, that is the end. And so that is the end. So ready for any questions, comments, tomatoes?
I don't like feeling like I do the bulk of the talking, so I'm going to defer to my colleagues here for kind of the first round of questions here. And my vice chair, I know has a meeting in a bit, so I want to make sure that we go to her first man, vice president, vice chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation, very thorough, needed explanation. I guess I just want to have a little bit more conversation on partnerships within other agencies that affect your continuation of, I guess, street repair-type projects. And I guess I'll start off, you know, in our city, we have all kinds of development taking place, and a lot of that is being done through either BGE or DPW, especially pipe work. And I know all of us have areas where they're, you know, digging up pipes and doing things, but it is on streets. But I'll just give a quick example of just some of the problems that make these projects take longer to complete. And I'll give you an example. We have Roland Park Country School that's right there next to Deep Dean, and they're, of course, building new buildings and updating the school. And on Deep Dean, there's become this runoff problem that has been happening for many years that run on Deep Dean. It's messing up the street, and DOT cannot do their part until, I guess, they figured out that it's pipes underneath, and DPW has to come in and do that before, I guess, DOT does work. I feel that the communication is like last minute, whether it's an emergency. This isn't really an emergency because the same problem happens every year, especially during the colder months where that runoff will freeze, and the summer it might flood. But that's just kind of an example of some of those things that are happening around the city on Falls Road. They did a wonderful, DOT did a wonderful repaving after six, seven years of that street finally getting repaved. Within three days, BGE comes and digs up, and it has never, the sections are still messed up, maybe five, six years, and still. We just find those kind of things happening all over the city, and when it's happening together, it's, the aesthetics of the city is just terrible. So let's just, if you've found some new ways that you're going to have better communication with particularly DPW and other, we'd like to, just like to know that.
Right.
Because at the end of the day, you know, the complaints come to us.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, Madam Director, I mean, if we could keep, there is a whole other can of worms to be opened regarding inter-agency and multiple roadworks projects in the street. I think that's a big discussion. If you could provide perhaps a very brief response on this.
Absolutely.
Because I want to try to keep it focused on more the outward community engagement practices than the inter-agency kind of stuff for the time being.
Yes, sir. So I think you're 1,000% right. I would, I always like to start as a constituent experiencing it and then taking my role as to the director, experiencing it as well. I think probably within the first two or three days, I stepped right into challenges with the communication efforts eight years ago. Same thing, there were challenges. We are working actively with DPW, talking with me, speaking with Clea regularly, and hopefully within a short period of time, working to schedule time where we are able to move into looking at our respective project lists for next season to see where there are overlaps, starting with internal lists and then subsequently moving to our external stakeholders to see what their projects look like. It kind of makes no sense, and it's no jab at anyone, but that we are, again, like I said, acting in silos, that BGE has their list, DPW has their list, DOT has their list, and we are not communicating with one another and reopening streets after they have been beautifully paved by one or the other. I live on Monticello Road, I can't help but saying this. It took me six years to get money from the state of Maryland to get that Windsor Mill Road paved. It was $10 million, and BGE just tore it up at Lindhurst and Windsor Mill Road, and they tore it up without proper right-of-way permitting, too. And now it's destroyed, and they haven't been back because they don't have the right permits still. And I yesterday made a 3-1-1 request because the road is destroyed, and I almost got a flat tire, and I've watched 25, 30 other people. So again, citizen hat, director hat, everything is not going right in that sense, but we are trying to actively right and correct the communication in silos of agencies, stakeholders, trying to get on the right path. And I'll defer back to you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you for that. That's a very good update.
I'm going to, not that everybody has to give me the yellow tickets or anything, but since I have one from Councilman Blanchard, I'll start with him, and then I'm going to kind of go back and forth here, alternating sides and just call members here. Councilman Blanchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Madam Vice Chair's point, and I'll just kind of briefly observe that, you know, it appears that BGE is tearing up a lot of these roads because it's making a lot of money for their parent company's investors, and there is state-level legislation that is being considered for this. I hadn't thought about it from this perspective, you know, we think about it from the ratepayer perspective, but it's also making things really hard for DOT and DPW, and just that that's an additional bad thing that is happening because of this strategy. So just a brief thought there. So the question I had, the Orlean Street, Complete Streets project, there was, the banner wrote an article, I think in '22, their analysis showed that per resident, there were more collisions. Orlean Street next to Dunbar was the most collisions per resident in the city, and then number three was Orlean Street, like the neck, kind of like over by Hopkins, I guess, Care. And so it's really, really bad, and I know that's a big part of why y'all are doing it. But in the presentation, I saw that construction's anticipated to start in 2029. Is that primarily a, just getting the project into the CIP and funding whatever the project is? Or is some of the delay due to, or some of that length of time due to a very thorough community engagement process?
Sorry. And I'm not, is Clea here with us? Okay. So Clea isn't here, so I know she has more details, so I can follow up with some additional details about that. But I know that we are just in the planning phase, so with being just in the planning phase, that could itself take multiple years. But also, funding, as we know, is invariably a huge problem with us being able to take a project of this size that hits such a large footprint, to be able to do it within a one- to two-year timeframe from 30% planning all the way to final design and then subsequently bidding out the project to do it with a contractor. So I would say two things. One, obviously, we want to do a full and complete job based on community engagement. And not to say community engagement isn't the priority, but I would say a close number two is having the funding to complete the project in an even timelier fashion, frankly.
Yeah, I got you. And yeah, I guess just kind of the overarching point of the question is, in situations where, like it is a very clear traffic, like people are getting hit by cars and sometimes dying because of, because of how the road is designed, being as important as a very thorough community engagement process is, I just think that that's important to factor that in, right, when there is very real, say, traffic safety or other very compelling concerns. Fully hearing on the complexity of planning this out and the challenge of actually funding such a project. So, thank you.
Right. Oops. Well, one thing I would note, and I'm happy to go back to our traffic department and see if there are some interim components as far as like signalization and other things that we could do in the interim and perhaps be one of the turnaround residuals that we can get back to you as far as follow-up.
I mean, that, that sounds like a great, like if a problem's identified in an area, having something that is a quick-build solution to help mitigate it as the thing is being, you know, it's not in my district, I don't mean to imply that I'm asking for that, but I think that'd be good.
No, and when I say, when I'm saying like, not necessarily, oh, hi, Clea, how about that? Look at that. I'll give her a moment to get settled, and we can perhaps come back to this, but not necessarily saying like a quick build per se, but if it's, if it's something that could be kind of managed, signaling, pedestrian timing, or even trying to update like crosswalks or beacons and things like that that we could do that are financially feasible in the interim, I think it's something we can definitely take a look into.
Awesome.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Director. I think there is a whole other conversation also to be had about the idea of projects where we know that there is an imminent safety concern, or locations where we know that there's an imminent safety concern, but not so imminent funding to do what is, you know, needed or what is ideal, what we would like to do, and how we, how we mobilize interim solutions. That's probably a whole discussion in of itself as well. And I appreciate the questions also that give us a little sense of, I think, a greater sense about the project that the department chose as its kind of example in the presentation. I hope, though, that we will not do too much kind of like, here's a project in my district, where are we with this? I want to make sure that we're trying to have a discussion here kind of more on the broader practices. I want to go to Councilman Balock next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director. Just to somewhat echo some of the things that you've already highlighted, but also some of our colleagues are dealing with. I think the safety improvements is probably one of the most significant pieces that we can deal with. I'm also thinking about some of our experiences where we've had traffic calming requests, we've gone out with some engineers, done some neighborhood walks. Just want to hear a little bit more about the follow-up on some of those types of things, right, where we have drawings or have engineers on the case, because a lot of times, folks feel like, you know, they've gone through this process initially of submitting the request, going through the process of a walk, having someone probably give a sketch of what's possible, but just what the follow-up looks like and the timing that people can really expect from the start of that process to completion. And I will literally, I will say literally, as I was sitting here, Councilmember Porter and I, we're dealing with another safety request in our district. So again, these are significant issues, just want to hear a little bit more about that, but appreciate the work you're doing.
Absolutely. I'm going to start off, and then I might defer to my colleague, Clea. Yeah, so have a seat, Clea. So I know that traffic calming requests and traffic safety requests are some of the highest, if not the highest, requests that we get coming in through, through online, specifically, dare I say the word, speed humps. So a lot of those are requests that come in, and realistically, the volume at which they're coming in are a volume at which we do have challenges with keeping up. And specifically, if they're listed as speed hump requests or even traffic calming requests based on the volume we're receiving, the volume of staff we have, and the other daily work that we're dealing with. That being said, we are actively addressing traffic calming requests. As far as like the walkthrough sketches and things like that and the start to completion, I will defer to Clea a little bit to talk a bit about that. I will note, as we move forward through our processes with 3-1-1, the requests that are going through 3-1-1 will be requests for traffic calming, period. Traffic calming, not traffic calming plus speed humps. It will be traffic calming requests. And I'm saying that specifically because we, DOT, are the subject matter experts. We are having people specifically ask for traffic calming and allowing us to come out to determine what and if type of traffic calming is needed or to be determined to be put in the neighborhoods. When you get a traffic calming request, I had a data poll before this meeting, which it wasn't specifically for this meeting, but since you asked, I had data polled, and over 78% of the requests coming in for traffic calming have a subset of requests that not only says traffic calming, but they say speed humps. And considerably less, and I'll let Clea perhaps give you the number, are actually needed for speed humps. But 78% of the traffic calming requests come in are specifically requesting speed humps. Clea, I'll defer to you to answer the second portion of that question.
Sure, thank you, Director. So Clea Baumhofer, Chief of Traffic Engineering. In terms of timelines for different traffic calming requests, it can be pretty variable because just the amount of design detail and the amount of community engagement can kind of vary in the needs from different treatments. And there are some different processes for different treatments. For example, something like speed humps where folks are very familiar with it, we do a postcard process, which is just a little more straightforward. People are already aware of what a speed hump would mean, so we send out postcards and we gather feedback. And if there is not a majority negative response, then a speed hump can move forward pending review with the fire department. But for some other traffic calming items, it can be narrowing lanes, or sometimes we will do a one-way pattern or, you know, road diets. Some of these are just more significant changes that require a deeper level of design and a deeper level of outreach that can really extend the timelines from, and even something that seems relatively simple, like a flex post bump out. You know, our engineering team, we're looking at truck routes, we're looking at bus routes, and just making sure that what goes out there really is the best solution. So it is often several months, even from a walk and kind of identifying the needs to that final design being developed. And then it depends, once you have that design that has been fully vetted, are we in construction season or have we gotten to the colder months? So those are the two, I would say, like, main variables in our timelines besides just the high demand, honestly.
So I'll just say thank you both for the response. The transportation planner in me definitely appreciates what you say in terms of being the subject matter experts. I know oftentimes folks may default to the speed hump, but again, there are some other solutions that we'd be looking at. I would, the one follow-up I would just say, because you mentioned to the extent that the community's engaged, do you envision working with neighborhood associations in terms of like community meetings, or how do you see that? I know some neighborhoods are a little bit more organized than others, but can you speak to that a little bit? And I think that's the last question that I have.
Absolutely. The answer is yes, and I will allow Asia to jump in into this, but just in my hat as Director, the answer is yes. We do, and we see it as proactive engagement, not just showing up to communities when they request us, but showing up to communities at their monthly, quarterly meetings to engage with them, to see what their needs are before. to engage with them, to see what their needs are before they request them, or to let people know, you know, we've, we've heard you from your previous requests, or even if we know like the upcoming infamous orange cone list is coming through, and these are some of the things after we've engaged, of course, with your council, to let them know that like these are some of the areas that will be happening in your neighborhoods and things like that. So I think it's important, the engagement component, one, with the community, but equally with council, to talk to them about projects and priorities that could or happen in their neighborhoods. And then separately, one of the things I think it's also equally critical is letting the communities know like where their powers lie, right? I mean, I think oftentimes for the ones that are less organized, talking to them about where their resources are. A lot of communities, it, I'd be remiss without saying Councilman Blanchard's neighborhood. I mean, the level of organization that I experienced in going there to chat with his community, their accessibility and knowledge about grants, it would be helpful to share that type of information with other communities, and a lot of folks don't know about it. And so perhaps, you know, it could be a tutorial where we have community associations helping other community associations, and maybe we can help facilitate some of that community engagement amongst communities. You know, it's, it's, you know, knowledge is free. So, and I think that's some of the things that could happen in our off times as far as like specifically delving in to a problematic issue in a meeting. This could be proactive and helpful engagement. Just some thoughts off the top of my head, but as a, again, Director and a community member who's active in her community outside of work, we just got over $100,000 from state funding to do work in our community. So it can happen. And quickly, Asia, I will defer to you.
I believe our Director covered it. Proactive activity always helps when we're being very visible in the community and making sure that we're there and making sure we participate in anything the community needs so that we can have the issues before they're ideally placed in 3-1, to make sure that we can have open conversations about it and being clear about what we're going to deliver and how we're going to deliver it.
Well, thank you. I think we could all agree in terms of being proactive versus being reactive, but also managing expectations and being realistic too. So that's much appreciated, and thank you.
Before I go to Councilman Gray, I think I want to kind of tack on to Councilman Bullock's first question here about kind of like timeline. There were a number of slides that touched on timelines and different phases. When we did a prep meeting, when DOT, the mayor's office, met with me and Councilwoman Porter two weeks ago in prep for this, one of the things that we talked about was kind of the need to maybe work backwards to understand if we have this project that's supposed to go into construction on a certain date, how long before that do we need to be planning for the last meeting that would have been taking place or should be taking place, and the second to last, and the third to last, and whatever, however many meetings there need to be? What is that timeline looking like in terms of structuring, community engagement? On a timeline, I'm wondering, one, do we have, I know that we have the, the matrix for projects that is in the Complete Streets manual that says all of, or, you know, lists a substantial number of forms of projects and various phases that projects could potentially be going through, and there are boxes that are checked for what steps need to be taken for which project, and some of those steps are community engagement steps. Some that apply to certain types of projects, some that don't apply to certain types of projects. So two things I would like to ask for is, is, is for review of that matrix to ensure that it is up to date and complete. And particularly with community engagement steps in it, is there, I'd, I'd like to ask for a sense of timeline actually to be added, or, or if it's too much to ask that a timeline be added to that matrix, because there would be just so much variability based on so many different project types requiring so many, such variation in the steps that they have to go through. If we could see some general written timelines for how projects of different sorts need to work in terms of their various community engagement steps, I would say, again, that's something that I would envision as a campaigner, you know, working from your election day backwards to the steps that need to be taken, or, and in this case, you know, getting from our end result of going to construction, you know, at least the start of construction, working back, what are those steps? And what do those timelines look like? The first thing, and the third, first thing that I thought of when Councilman Bullock asked the question was on this, the, this slide on transportation project cycle, like what is the timeline between, what is the time between step one and step two of this process? And I think Clea spoke to the, I think also the human resource capacity constraint that is a factor in that, whereas like the point that Clea made about seasonal impacts comes more at the end. You know, it might delay between four and five, but that's not what's delaying between one and two. You know, what are the different time ganks, expectations?
Mr. Chair, can you just restate it so I can make sure that I captured it accurately?
Sure. One, an updated review of the project matrix that's in the Complete Streets manual to ensure that it has a full listing especially of community engagement steps. And two, I would say perhaps a sampling of project types. In the presentation, there was a slide on when should we do community engagement? So perhaps taking these eight bullet points and providing a timeline of community engagement steps or general project timeline that includes those community engagement steps for each of these eight types of projects listed on the slide. When should we do community engagement? What do we think would be a timeline, a reasonable timeline for turning around these couple of requests?
I mean, I think that's, that's more so for the agency, so.
Can you give us like, I'd say maybe 2.5 weeks, and I'm hoping less than that?
2.5 weeks?
Yes.
I'm happy if you do it in a month, honestly.
Even better.
Okay, great.
All right, just like, and we have another big hearing at the end of this month, and then we'll have your second hearing by the end of this month too.
Yeah, totally.
So, okay. So I have notes about this as well. I think we have enough information that already exists to address this. I think it's finding the best way to compile the information. I know Tyler has his notes, I probably have different notes, probably in a more technical way of, I think, how you're requesting the information, so.
Sure. And Tony's taking notes here on behalf of the committee, and so he'll send this out as a summary of the things that the committee requests.
Awesome.
Councilman Gray.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. As someone who has spent way too much time at community meetings over the last four years, one of the things I know it's very important to our communities is information and communication. So I guess in that realm, what synergy are we seeing between the PIO office and our liaisons? And the reason I ask is because the PIO office does a great job on social media. They do an amazing job on getting out a message. It's funny, it is, you know, it, it triggers a response, but I feel like a lot of the times, our liaisons aren't also conveying that message. So for someone like me, I can see it, but for my grandmother, great-grandmother, they're not on Facebook as often sometimes, or Instagram, and so they're not seeing it. And so my first question is just, how are we taking advantage of the asset that we have in the PIO office to make sure that we're streamlining it and making it more synergy between our liaison office and the great folks like Eric James and Sandra? And so those folks are able to also reiterate that message so we're making sure that all ages are getting the same message.
I think that's a really good question. I know that a lot of our public information, press releases and links come to our varying community associations as links from, directly from our community liaisons. They have a repository of community associations where the information will come directly to them. I definitely know also though, there are probably some missed opportunities for some of the information that's coming. I would probably say more of the social media constructs as far as it coming through to different community associations. I would say in those particular essences, it may be based on the fact that if we're not following one another, or if a social media presence is with DOT and may not be with a community association. But if there is something that comes in the format of an email, such as a press release or a project activity, it typically is sent out to community associations. Obviously, I expect that there are one-offs where everything is not going out to everyone. But more specifically, I would also allow Asia to speak on that. And since you mentioned Eric and he happens to be here, if he has anything he'd like to add, I would encourage him to also chime in as well. But Asia.
So between the PIO and the liaisons, we speak regularly during the week, and most of the information that the PIO gets from, that is distributed to DOT, we have given it to them first. But we also have a chain where we come back and we communicate and make sure anything that's blasted through social media is also taken to the communities and presented when they have the community meetings. I understand that we do have a gap between social media and people that are not there. So that's something that we're working on to figure out, how can we close that gap? We've been tugging with a couple of ideas to make sure that it's something that we can sustainably make sure that we can continue to do and not introduce something that just happens once or not, that is not sustainable. So we're trying to figure out how we can close the gap with those that are not on social media or not reading the newspaper, to figure out how we can get the information to them as well.
Thank you. Because off the top of my head, just, just a few things that I can think of. Even if folks aren't on Facebook, I know a lot of the times you're still able to share a video and someone can still, like, even if your grandmother has a phone or someone, she can like click on the video and still watch it while having an account. And I know just from, you know, previous work in Councilman's office and in my office now, we do community academies, which we will just get a, we'll just focus on like one issue and invite all the community associations to come and watch it, and, and also whoever else can just get to it as well. And that seems like that's really helpful. And finding the person that isn't necessarily connected to a community association, but all, but want to know the information. Because we all know that as effective, community associations are effective, but not everyone's a part of a community association. There are more folks that aren't a part of a community association than are. And so I guess another, another question I have is, I guess leveraging the information that we're receiving from a council office and making sure that we can, I guess, get it out to the masses in a reasonable time. And when I think about this, I think about the DPW work notifications. You know, they actually send the work notification saying in District 8, this is going to be happening in two weeks. And then what we do is we send it to our community association presidents and folks in the neighborhood, if we have their emails, to let them know, hey, this work note, this is happening on this date, so you guys move your car, and it kind of helps them. And so are you guys working on implementing something like that? When you're having your work orders and when you know there's going to be a project that's happening, if you can send out some type of notification to us? You guys do a great job with the weekend closures, but like something along those lines for the neighborhood projects within the district, so we can actually send those out to our communities to let them know, hey, this is happening? And also, do you guys have a plan also empower our liaisons with that information as well? So when they're coming to these association meetings, they aren't just taking information back over and over again, they're actually sharing information, saying, hey, by the way, in Allendale, there's going to be this street repaving on such and such a date.
The answer is yes, and I will speak frankly, I know that should be happening now. And, you know, I will say that that should be happening. The information should be being disseminated to community associations. So your associations should be getting notifications that if work is happening in their neighborhoods. Some of the challenges, I will say that I know that we're facing is, is that if people, i.e. outside entities are doing work in right-of-way, they are not providing timely notification or notification at all. And I will say to you and anyone else, and I encourage you to say to your communities, and we will say it when we are out in your communities, if you see work happening in the right-of-way and if you have not been notified of said work happening in the right-of-way, if it's impeding access to your neighborhood, if you feel like there is not an adequate maintenance of traffic for you to move through your neighborhood, and again, you were not notified appropriately, do reach out to our office. You can reach out via 3-1-1, you can reach out through your councilperson who will subsequently, and inevitably, reach out to me. I am absolutely making sure that we take the time to reach out to our right-of-way office to ensure that our stakeholders are being held accountable for not establishing the proper protocols as far as letting constituents know that they are doing work in their neighborhoods because it's an inconvenience, it's dangerous, and a number of other things. But that being said, I think it's critical that we are taking the necessary messages for work that we are doing directly from DOT and sharing the information to the varying communities that we do have contact and information with. Asia, I'll let you jump in, in a second, but that information should be going to council offices and letting them know to share additionally, even if it's duplicative. It should, you know, you better to have it twice more than once. And if it's not happening, it should definitely happen moving forward. And then thirdly, I think it should also happen when we're going to community meetings, our liaison should definitely have a list of anything that is happening immediately, like intermittently and long-term projects that should be happening in their area. That should also be being told during those times as our liaisons are going into neighborhoods and community meetings. Asia, I will defer to you.
With work notification, I believe we are, been giving out the information, but I think we should partner with DPW to see how they're streamlining theirs, to see how it looks, so that instead of us recreating it well, we can duplicate and see if we can give the information out the same way that they are already giving out and not in a more lax way that we've already been disseminating it.
Yep, I appreciate it. Because the question is not whether, you know, our liaisons are getting the information, they're not giving it out. We know that whenever they give information, I'll get a text or phone call from Sandra immediately whenever she hears something. It's just empowering our liaisons who are also, I like to say, in the trenches at these community meetings daily, and they are the person that, they're getting the agitation, they're getting the screams and the yells from a lot of communities. And I just think sometimes they can be empowered and equipped with a little more information to be able to, to be able to state whatever is really and truly going on, so everyone can just have a level of expectation. So I do, I definitely appreciate it. Thank you, Chair.
I do have a question related to that about, I guess...
I don't like to put things on the director's plate if I don't have to. If, um, if there is a kind of a failure of communication from, let's just say B G E, um, uh, or a failure to establish, uh, or sustain proper maintenance of traffic in the course of work, who at D O T is actually in charge of holding them accountable? Or who would be if not you, the director? Hit the button.
Sorry?
They couldn't hear you. It's a good.
Oh, okay. Yeah, you would reach out to the right of ways office, um, the director, I mean, the person there, the leader there is Adam Cloud, but subsequently you would reach out to, in addition to Adam Cloud, Stanley Jacobs and Marvin Dow. Um, yeah, Marvin Dow. Um, those are the people who actually would, um, inspect and issue the fines.
I don't know, uh, Marvin Dow, but I can tell you that Stanley Jacobs has been great on this actually, uh, on street cuts issues, especially when there are street cuts that have, that are like way beyond the point when D P W or B G E or a contractor with the right of way, uh, we call it a developer's agreement should have restored conditions.
Yeah. So again, Adam Cloud, Stanley Jacobs and Marvin Dow.
Great, thank you. Um, Councilman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, everybody for being here. I, I'm looking at the transportation project cycle, uh, slide and really appreciated it. Recognizing that in particular between the design alternatives and engineering, there's, uh, it's not, my experience and it's limited at this point, right? Cause I'm at the relative beginning of my relationship with you all as councilperson. Um, but that there's movement back and forth between those, right? As we get to different stages of design and things like that, as we, and, and there's communication, there's public communication that happens in between. Um, without getting into the details of the specific project, which I appreciate, Mr. Chair, um, I'm thinking in particular about Washington Wolf. And I know I'm meeting with your team on Monday, uh, at their invitation specifically to talk about that. So I'm looking forward to that conversation and I'm not trying to cover stuff here, we'll cover there. Um, but the hearings today, so it's on my mind. I, one of the things I've noticed with that project in particular, but I think at other projects that I've tracked around the city is that the public engagement, uh, is, is often incredibly well done. The information is presented well, uh, questions are answered incredibly respectful, the invitation, the publicity about that is, is, uh, is very widespread. It's in good meeting space. I mean, it's, it's some of the, some of the better, uh, public information sessions I've been a part of. It's the communication in between and, and the huge delay between those check-ins with the community that has been the most frustrating part, right? Um, neighbors get really excited about the work you all are doing, what's been proposed, their contributions to it. And then by the time we get to the next meeting, uh, people are, are, have moved from excitement. So like, where's this thing that we've been talking about that we're really eager to see happen because we know what an impact it's going to make on our community? Um, again, without the specifics of one project or another, I, I, what are, what have you all experienced as a department as kind of driving those significant delays between, uh, between the communication side of things, um, that then starts to sour the communication because people get bitter about projects instead of kind of continuing to be engaged and excited? So what's, what's happening in between those public check-ins that, that is slowing us down and, and what are our, what are our, what are we doing to address some of those things?
Um, I'll start. Um, I know Sean, this is your slide, correct? Yeah, so I'm going to let you dig in and then I'll also let, um, Clea, if you have anything to say as well. Um, I'm going to speak from my experience as somebody who's dug into community engagement and have, has experienced both sides of community engagement where it's kind of waned in the middle, but also where it's dug in, in the middle. And you can see a extensive difference in project acceptance versus like project pitchforks and, um, what's the other thing, torches? Um, so I think oftentimes like, you know, you want to dig in at the beginning of a project, which you absolutely should do. But frankly, as, um, I mentioned previously, you should dig into, um, a community before the project even happens, right? You want to have like a well longstanding relationship with your communities before you go in and you're telling them, which I think is the absolute wrong thing to do is telling them what you're doing to them or for them, instead of engaging them with what is going to happen, how they foresee things to happen, and also how you talk about the alternatives of a project, right? Um, I'd always like to provide a project example. Um, I worked on the B and P tunnel project when it was B and P tunnel. So I'll call it now the Frederick Douglass Tunnel Project. We hosted forty-five meetings. We were scheduled to host twelve. Um, I fought back considerably to host forty-five meetings because the timing was not working for everybody. Some people were shift workers, some people had childcare issues, some people didn't have food in their homes to come to the meetings and they needed to feed their kids. So we made sure we fed them, we had childcare, we had meetings in the morning, we had meetings in the afternoon, we had meetings in the evening. So these are all the things associated with why you're having a meeting at the times you're having, the accessibility components that we just talked about, all of these things. Separately, we had so many meetings because we wanted people to understand all of the altern, alternatives associated with the project. And the cheapest alternative is not always going to be the best because it might have the biggest impact. And I think as agencies, we have to, um, get away from forcing that on people. And I'm not saying us as the agency as that we force it on people, but that was one of the tells for me with that particular project, right? And so the facilitation of making sure that people understand what they're getting and not what, and it not be what's happening to them, but what's happening for them. So that's my preface to that point. So the engagement throughout the project was super critical, right? And so you had more buy-in with the project and you had this consistent, long-term project engagement. That should happen at a project the size of two point two billion dollars or two hundred thousand dollars. And so that, that is the point I'm trying to make. So it doesn't matter the size of the project, you should still have the investment in the people despite the size of the project. Um, so that's the one thing I want to say. What we do need to continue to do is make sure that we have the long-term investment in people and communities throughout the project, not just when it starts. And then we're waiting until we get to sixty-five percent design. And I think that's, although we're thinking like, oh, we are engaging because that is the middle of the project, sixty-five percent design may not come for six to nine months and nobody's heard from us. And so if you're not of a technical mind or have that technical savvy, and we typically try to explain projects like this at what, like a fourth grade level, if I'm not mistaken, and that's not meant to be insulting, but it's just, you know, I think when I started, I had no idea what an easement was back when I was like, you know, twenty years old and I, I bought my first, you know, property and I'm like, what's an easement? Um, but like words like that, people throw words around like that and you want to make sure people understand all those things. And so that being said, we need to engage people before sixty-five percent. Just because we talked to them at the planning phase, we need to engage them at thirty percent and in between sixty-five and in between sixty-five and ninety-five, and then at ninety-five and in between final design and after final design and all of those timeframes. And so I think that is something that we can always do better. It's not anything we're going to ever do perfect. But, um, those are my sentiments. Those are things that as the new director here, I would like to and will plan on to make sure that we do better. Um, and if we're doing it well, I would like for us to do it better. Um, Sean, I'll defer to you, and I know I've taken a lot of time talking, so you don't have that much time, Sean.
I'll, I'll be, I'll try to be very brief. Um, so, uh, I think to the director's point, you know, continuity of engagement is incredibly important. Um, for some of these projects, right, when we generalize them into three primary buckets, there's the planning phase, the engineering phase, and then the construction phase. The, the vast majority of what, um, uh, the public kind of regards as that critical engagement occurs in that planning phase, trying to understand what the needs are, what the variables are, what is expected and what they can expect. Um, a- and candidly, you know, within our project delivery pipeline, that planning phase, uh, again, to the director's point, can sometimes be preceded by a, an overly large, uh, engineering phase, um, especially when we're talking about large projects, um, where we may not have a lot of new information, right? Not a lot of new things. Um, and I think that, again, one of the things that we're addressing now specifically to try and create that continuity of engagement, um, is focusing on smaller events, not necessarily large community engagement, kind of like open houses and things of that nature, but, but pop-ups, um, you know, working with our community engagement team to engage communities directly, to give them updates if we have possible timelines, you know, these sorts of things to keep it fresh in people's minds as the agency and the city writ large, take the community's idea or the plans that we have vetted through the community, um, and take them through the engineering phase and then also, right, try to figure out sometimes as we assemble the funding for construction, that, there's a lot of moving pieces trying to make these large projects happen. Um, and we're going to double down on trying to continue to continuously engage, uh, and keep these projects fresh on people's minds and, and also, you know, not set expectations overly high, be very candid about what they can expect and when they can expect it.
Yeah, this is clear. The only thing I'll add is what Sean did touch on, just like the nature of engineering design, like a three-year time period to take, that's once the planning has already been complete. So really we already have a direction we want to go in, like a preferred design and just getting that to full construction documents with all the design details. Three years is a very, could, would be a very typical, like that's if things are going well. So it is tough to, that's like the kind of time scale, it's tough to bring to the public. Um, I find just like keeping interest for that long is reasonably difficult to do. But I think with the, that kind of pop-up strategy and just keeping it top of mind, um, we can be more successful.
I really appreciate all that and thank you for sharing. I think my concerns are that beyond the actual engineering work, which needs the time that it needs to, to happen. I, I think further complications, again, from out, not from inside the department, someone trying to tell you this is true, but from, from where I sit, it seems that also changes in leadership, um, in different roles in, in the organization have, have slowed down the actual work itself, not just this is how long the engineering takes, but it's not just the community that has lost focus sometimes. It feels like sometimes D O T has lost track of or the, the forward momentum internally towards getting things done. And maybe that's unfair, but it, that's the perception from outside, like, um, it, sometimes it's felt like sometimes engineering work has been completed or is close to completion, but has been slowed down for political purposes outside the, and I'm not asking you to confirm that, but that's the perception that sometimes things stop or get paused or extra community engagement is tossed in to slow things down until such a time that the outcome that the department is working towards, uh, is politically acceptable to people who are, are outside that department. So again, I, I'm, I'm off that as an observation, not, I'm not trying to put you in opposition to weigh in on that, but that has been my sense of two of the other dry rurs of these, in addition to the, the hard work of engineering.
Thank you, Altsman. Uh, time check here. We have another committee in this room at noon and a half an hour. Uh, I have a, maybe a related follow-up here, and then we're going to go to Councilwoman Porter. Um, you okay? Okay. Uh, then I will, uh, have a related thing to that, and then I have a couple of things that I, I want to jog my memory going through these slides. I think that there is, we heard it from Councilman Bullock, and I think that what Councilman Parker is saying is very similar to what Councilman Bullock is saying, is just like, what happens in this time when nobody's hearing from anybody? Uh, one thing that I'm not sure that we have, uh, but that would perhaps be helpful in these, uh, situations is an online presence of a sense of timeline. I'm not sure that we have like, I know that we have project announcements on the streets of Baltimore, uh, page, um, but not necessarily like a, a, a public presentation of all the phases and where things are in that timeline. Um, that would be really helpful. Um, again, easier done if we have like a projected construction date and all of the various phases known at the very outset of anything to do with it and being able to identify all of those steps and where we are in them. Um, so that's sort of a suggestion and also a request that this be something that the department adopt as a practice. I, I also want to acknowledge that the, uh, that the beginning of this presentation says community engagement strategic plan. So I, I recognize that a lot of this is aspirational also in terms of like, we're reworking how we approach this stuff.
I'd say aspirational and institutional. So please watch as it becomes in- institutionalized. And if I can quickly say, and I know I'm taking a liberty, but what you said is not far-fetched about things getting stuck. And one thing I did right is, is that sometimes we lose a continuity of service, right? When you lose people, when there's a shift of, um, elected officials or things like that, and so projects get stuck. And so what has been once maybe been prioritized by some becomes deprioritized by others. And so I think that has to be recognized. And so I'm not responding one way or another, but I think it's recognized. And so if a project has been funded and things like that, we need to, I think, take acknowledgement that if a project has been funded and if we are going to continue to work at it, I think that the agency director, you know, be it that if they're still intact and in charge and whatever political climate that they're a part of, they need to also be able to ask the hard questions and ask, are you still moving forward with this project? Are we moving away from it? And then we need to be able to deliver the equally hard answers to the council if we are or are not moving forward with it, or if we are redirecting, or if we need to address how we're moving.
Uh, my other follow-up on this, I think is related, is it, it comes back to this question of how staffing capacity can cause delays, um, with respect to the volume of requests that there are for things. Um, I know that something that this council has already talked about in its two months of this term, but that certainly was something talked about throughout the last council's term and even much more so in the term before that, is about the reliance on outside consultants and contractors as opposed to in-house, bulking up in housing, in-house staffing. Um, this is sort of a budgetary question, but it's also, I think it's, it, it's very relevant to our work as a committee. Um, I want to just ask for copies of some contracts, maybe. Uh, I know that similar work in design, there's different levels of, in traffic division, we rely on traffic engineers in-house, but also consultants. But in the tech division, we rely on also for, um, civil engineers and others, bridge engineers and such, um, but also traffic engineers there. Um, and I think that there's a lot of, well, I'll just, I'll leave it at that and, and just ask for maybe, could we have copies of four recent contracts where we relied on consultant engineers for, from tech division and similarly for, for traffic? Is for a, a number that would help me to be able to understand essentially what we're paying, uh, to consultants outside of city hall to do the same work that could be done in-house. Uh, my sense is that we pay two or three My sense is that we pay two or three times as much for those same labor hours outside of City Hall as what we would pay somebody in-house and that if we just had more people in-house, we could get more done for the same cost. Am I going to learn what I want to learn from four contracts?
I am happy to provide you four contracts.
For Tech and also for, do we use the same contract for Tech and for Traffic?
They can, they overlap.
They overlap sometimes. Okay, then do you want to just do six total and something like that?
I could do that, too.
Okay, great. Can you get us, I mean, they're contracts, they're just on hand. Can you send that within the next two weeks?
Yes.
All right, cool. You don't have anything? All right, cool. I have a few things. I'm going to run through this, a few slides here. One thing that stuck out to me in the page on Transportation Project Cycle, where we show five basic steps. And something that has been a concern for me is what happens in, let's say, Step Two. Design, or it says DOT collects data, performs observations and develops concepts to meet project goals. I have been frustrated by the number of projects where none or some of the concepts do not adhere to all of the adopted laws and plans of the city, like putting forth a plan to make modifications to a street that is on the Bicycle Master Plan and where it's designated as the kind of road where a very specific type of facility is what's warranted by the roadway typology, which is also informed by adjacent land use and such. Where like if it's on a plan, there shouldn't be concepts that don't have that incorporated into them. It should just never be an option. And I just want to make sure that, because because that really affects what happens when we get to Step Three. If we're presenting alternatives that don't adhere to adopted plans, like, that's going to be like a a pretty cut and dry point of contention when we see, when we hear from people saying like, how could you even have presented this? This doesn't adhere to our laws that say that plans have to incorporate plans. That's a big concern for me. And so in and of itself isn't a community engagement thing, but it sets us up for a common form of community engagement feedback, I would say, that should be avoidable and shouldn't ever really be occurring. Is that fair?
Absolutely, that's fair. And I definitely see the directionality in where you're going and some project challenges, you know, I know we recently talked about. So I just think we need to do and have more due diligence about the overlap of existing requirements and making sure that we are reviewing all of the requirements that are established by city codes that we've accepted and put into city law and things that we have approved that are outside of city law and codes, but things that we have agreed to abide by at BCDOT and making sure that we are instituting it from every angle, you know, be it traffic, maintenance, tech, all of the places, and even in the Planning Department, like making sure that we're utilizing them also as kind of our eyes and ears and, you know, the muscle, if you will.
You're looking at Sean as the planning whisperer?
Yeah. Sean has the muscle appearance that he could, you know, handle the people upstairs.
The two-button thing.
It is. Yes, and it's also the mustache.
Yeah. Yeah. Look, I just, to be frank, when I come to this conversation about like, how, why does community engagement need to be improved? Where the like failings, shortcomings that we've experienced? I just have had so many of these experiences where like, basically, nobody on either side of a point of contention is happy with what has transpired. You have, you know, this looming understanding that like something is going to happen on a street, and particularly where there's a bike lane involved. You have this looming understanding that like, there's going to be a thing where people ride bikes on this street. And on the one hand, you have people who, no matter how much and no matter how high the quality of engagement, they'll point to like, nobody asked me or nobody told me as they're like, you know, well, you shouldn't do anything because the community engagement wasn't up to my standard. And on the other hand, I hear from people go like, why did you go out there and talk to those people about a concept that wasn't legal to build anyway? Because it didn't actually adhere to these adopted plans? And why are we not going out there? You know, and so that's, you know, or or I know that there were, you know, five people who came out opposed to this thing, but like there were also 150 letters of support. And all those letters get essentially referenced as like one voice, not 150. Whereas each of the five points of opposition have like, that's five. And it's a five to one when, you know, it's 150 to five. You know, it's, there's a, the metrics of community engagement are not the not the beginning and end of things, but you did talk about metrics in this as well.
And that's, I mean, my opinion, but it seems like a different type of equity issue, right? Like the support and not support of facilities or projects based on locality, the who is there, the who is not there, who will come there, who won't come there. So those are, I think, larger issues that may not necessarily be the responsibility of the liaisons, but it falls in the wheelhouse of perhaps helping navigate that. I will say it's a broader issue of, you know, leadership level issues that come into play. I will say some projects, though, you can see.
You're good.
Okay, where there has been sometimes community turnover for as long as maybe the beginning of a project has been announced versus to when it's going to happen. And there has, or the project is such a mega infrastructure project where certain areas has had significant community engagement, but the project timeline has been so long that you have literally lost upwards of anywhere between 40 to 60% of the original community members. And so it runs that fine line, right, of how much interim engagement are you doing? Where does the engagement stop? Because you know, not it stopped, but where does it become notified that, hey, this project was approved and is still going to go on? Right? So it's the juxtaposition of those two things.
Yeah, to that, my last note on this, I guess, for me is I don't like us starting on the back foot when we've got projects where we know it's contentious, but we also know that like, it's something that should incorporate existing plans, like under any circumstance. It kind of necessarily has to incorporate things that are going to be contentious. We shouldn't be starting on the back foot by pretending that those requirements can just not be met. They have to be met. And so we just have to be frank about it. And I think that being frank upfront with community engagement is really at a fundamental level, it's a sign of respect. People are going to, there are going to be people who are opposed to a certain thing, but we also have to treat them with the respect to say, you live in this city, you live in this neighborhood, but you, and you need to know that the city has to do certain things to kind of pave the way for the future, and this is one of those things. So just being real frank about things like that, I think, is important. I want to ask for one other kind of, make one other request here. On the slide on community engagement regulatory requirements, I think it would be really helpful if there were, do you have a consolidated document of the Title VI ADA, NEPA?
Like if you want to pull from like the, like a executive summary or something like that from like a Congressional Record or US Code or?
Well, I mean, just like, is there a, is there a consolidate? In order for DOT to comply with all of these things, DOT has to know what all these things are. Is there a consolidated document for reference internally with the department that has all of the things from?
We have consolidated records for Title VI, NEPA and ADA, yes. It's housed within our contract admin office.
But it doesn't incorporate the city charter and code, sustainability plan, that stuff into it?
Asia, do you have those documents on hand within the office? I mean, I'm assuming you do because it's in there, but I'm saying, do you have it on hand as far as like within the maintenance of the materials that you've put together, like as appendices for the plan?
We always defer back to contract admin and they give us everything. So I can follow up with them to give you what you're asking for, a comprehensive document for you.
Yeah, we'd like a comprehensive document of all.
Everything that we have on hand, yeah. But all the things are housed in contract admin. But when this becomes like a, I guess, fully certifiable document within the agency, it will appear in appendices.
Okay. Then that's sufficient for me. We're putting together a document, it's got its own timeline. I'm going to go to Councilman Blanchard. We've got a couple of minutes left. I do want to make one other request on behalf of the council president for, for, in addition to the the kind of community engagement timelines for these eight bullet points that I mentioned before on the when do we do community engagement? Since we are using that, or since this presentation did rely on Orleans Street as a kind of an example project, can you give us a timeline that's like real-world kind of expectations or dates for that project in particular? A timeline? As, just not now, but.
Oh, okay, sure.
As something to be submitted in tandem with these things. The timeline for all the various phases of the Orleans Street project. Councilman Blanchard?
So, you know, I have, we've got folks in Upton who want a traffic calming intervention in Pennsylvania in Dolphin. I have folks in Seton Hill who want a traffic calming intervention at Paca Street next to St. Mary's Park. I've got folks in South Baltimore who want an intervention at Charles and Austin. You know, I think typically the community-led pushes are typically at intersections. The, and Mr. James, I want to call earlier, I'm just not quite sure, like, who needs to be in? Because there's multiple aspects of DOT who needs to be involved in this. And obviously DOT is, you know, has plenty of demand and not the staff to meet the demand for all of these interventions. So who needs to be in the meeting with the, you know, the community group and someone from my office from DOT to kind of communicate the feasibility of the request, what that might look like? Like who, who needs to be on that call?
So I want to start by saying, like, if you're going through the protocol or process that we do like to use, if it's like N311, is it N311? Is it an SR number? Once it has an SR number, has it been requested as traffic calming? And I know it sounds like ambiguous and tedious, but it's the best way for us to track things, right? So if it has been put in that way, even at the councilmatic level, you know? And so even doing that, even once you have it, then still reaching out to us and saying like, hey, this community is, even if you're telling your community association or your members to put the request in via 311, yes, traffic calming and everything else you can think of, still putting those requests in via 311 is very, very critical because things coming in piecemeal like that, it makes it that much harder to track. So then if it's coming in in an email format to say like, hey, I emailed you three weeks ago about this, when we can search it in a database that has SR 1234? All that being said, after it comes in, let's say it comes in as it should in an SR, and then we are delivering it out to our traffic team, they are going to subsequently say, okay, what's the location? They're going to assign someone to go and look at it. I mean, it's going to come in in a queue, right? It's not instantaneous. As much as we'd love things to happen as quickly as we want, there's a queue. There are other people that have come in before them. There's other council people that have equally requested similar things. So respectfully, there is also a queue. So we get to that particular request. Folks are going out checking the intersection where the request is. There's follow-up with the community. If you are tagged on it, and then there's a subsequent request for a meeting, then there would be outreach for that meeting. Once the request is followed up via SR requests, the community association, not community association, the community liaison is also looped in at that point with the SRS. And they will be kind of your guiding light between that communication and the person that's assigned in our traffic office. And so those are the ways that the connection goes oftentimes. But if it's communication that's going to come directly from you to our office, you'll be talking to our legislative staff, who is the coordinating entities between you and DOT, and that would be Luciano and Christian at the end of the tables.
We have two minutes before we got to clear out and let the next committee in here. Councilman Gray for a final question here.
So I guess great minds think alike and dress alike, Zach. So really quick, and this is something we can just talk offline and continue. And I kind of already answered part of the question because we no longer are, we have the ability to put in speed hump, right? For requests, when you're putting in 311 now.
You do not.
You do not, yes. But are we still working with like the fire department? I guess my question is, there are certain prompts where we're not able to have certain types of traffic calming. So depending on like the type of road it is, we can't put a speed hump there because the fire department is going to say no. Have we or are we or do we plan to work with like the fire department or other entities to like highlight those areas already so we can kind of level the expectation for our constituents when it comes to those types of issues? So when they put it in, we can say, hey, I know what you're asking, but we can't do speed humps. We, this is what we're able to do because the fire department has designated this as.
Absolutely, and that's where you can blame us implicitly. So this is the beautiful part of speed humps not being the option in there. So when you put speed humps in there, it triggers then a dropdown box asking about the fire department and everything else that would come to us anyway. And that would either X out the location for speed humps if it impacted the fire department or emergency services. But now that speed humps are no longer in there, it allows us as the subject matter experts to make that decision. And being the subject matter expert making a decision about whether a speed hump should go in to a specific street location, that is something that traffic will take a look at and know the guidelines associated with. It would be whether, if it would be a problem for emergency vehicles to move through that area. So they have all the necessary things they need to determine whether or not a speed hump would go in an area, including guidelines associated with emergency vehicles.
All right, 30 seconds of housekeeping here. One, thank you. Thank you, everybody. This has been informational. I think it will be more interrogative in the future. I'm looking forward to the plan coming together and becoming an official document and getting the responses we've asked for. The next DOT Oversight Hearing will be at 10 o'clock on April 17th on the subject of street lighting. This is an interesting subject and it's challenging. We are doing. We are doing a prep meeting on this on Wednesday, April 26th, so I invite up to two councilmen, yeah, Wednesday, March 26th, on, thank you, I invite up to two council members from the committee here to join me with DOT and BGE and the administration in that prep meeting. Please let me know, that'll be at 10 o'clock. Also, I sent out a notice to the committee members about the Smart Growth America Equity Summit, I think very relevant to the committee's work, that is happening that same day, so I can assure you that this prep meeting at 10 o'clock on the 26th will not run over because I need to be in DC by 1 o'clock to hear Jerusalem Dempsey speak on a topic that is, again, very relevant to this committee's work. And with that, we're going to let the next committee come in here, the committee's in recess.